At 6:02. I'm going to ask Councilman Gary Cochran to lead us in prayer and then pledge, and if everyone will remain standing after that.
Let's pray. Father God, we come before you tonight just asking for your guidance, your wisdom. We're in difficult times, but we look forward, we look towards you every day to give us a sense of peace and grace and lead us. Help us tonight as we make decisions that help move this city forward. Be with us and make us, help us make the right, those right decisions. We ask all this in your name, Father. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the Father of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we may give a few instructions. We'll remain standing because we have a presentation to make, in fact, a couple. So let me say, despite the COVID-19 pandemic and emergency situation we're all dealing with, we are thankful we have a way for the public to remain engaged and participate in open public council meetings in various ways. Citizen or public participation has been available by calling in, emailing, or using the City Hall Dropbox before 5:45. All of these instructions are provided online and in the agenda. Any questions that citizens and visitors might have may not be responded to until after public comments have concluded and if a member of council raises the question. Finally, we have attempted to omit any nonessential items from the agenda like announcements, open public forum, and items for future agendas. Instead, citizens and the public are always welcome to contact the city via our website, city app, email, and phone to make comment or ask questions on any subject. We ask for your patience through this. Now, I ask you to remain standing because we are initiating tonight a special award that we will be doing periodically called the Kerrville Kindness Award. And tonight, we will do, I will go through the proclamation, but this will be presented more personally at a later time. Also, if council members have recommendations of someone who in our community has gone above and beyond, making a difference, caring for others, and so forth, if you would let Ms. McLean know, or also Stuart Kenyon, our information officer. City of Kerrville recognizes Beth Palmer. And I understand she's probably watching, so I hope so. Beth Palmer with the July 2020 Kerrville Kindness Award for her leadership, dedication, and tireless work in setting up food pantries for area citizens during the COVID-19 pandemic. The City of Kerrville extends its most sincere thanks to Beth Palmer for embodying and exemplifying the very best of Kerrville kindness. Through Beth's efforts, more than 8,000 people have been fed in recent months through organizations like Light on the Hill and Mustard Seed Ministries. And this is signed by all of the members of the city council. I think we have a video?
Yes, sir.
That we're going to see.
You seem to be more just food.
Right. Other things as well, but food in itself beneath that growth.
Sure. So Mustard Seed, you know, we're even now that we have relocated and we're out here at Light on the Hill, we're still what I consider kind of a small pantry. You know, we would serve, you know, maybe 30 families, you know, a week or, you know, somewhere between 30 and 40 families a week. And then, all of a sudden, when this happened, the need just, you know, I think the first time that we did a drive group food pantry, you know, we had something like 160 families. And so, we were like, whoa. So, and so, yes, the need has truly grown and lots of new faces that we've met, you know, folks that have never been in a situation before where they needed to get help, right, with something, you know, like you, so.
All right. Okay. Okay, now, thank you, thank you, Beth Palmer. That is, that is well deserved. Now, remain standing because we want to recognize someone else who is moving to another position. And I personally really am sorry she's going. Laura Becktell.
Thank you, Mayor. Laura, come on up. We'll social distance so we don't have to mask. So, as you can imagine, it was with sadness that I got the news, but this is an incredible opportunity for Laura. And I think it's also an honor for us that she's been selected for a new position in Montgomery County, Maryland, which has 22 branch libraries, or libraries. And you'll be the assistant director or?
I'll be the assistant branch manager.
Assistant branch manager, okay. So it's a big system, and that's also where you're from, right, Maryland?
Yes.
All right. So it's kind of like going home, but we're going to sort of miss you. So let me read this on the city's behalf. Laura Becktell has been employed at the City of Kerrville's Buttholesworth Memorial Library since December 28, 2010. Immediately after she was hired, the library went under, underwent a major renovation. Just one short month after the grand opening, or reopening, Laura was named the interim library director, and then four months later, she was promoted to the full-time library director position. Laura earned a degree, a bachelor's degree in arts and anthropology from the University of Cincinnati, and a master of science in information studies from the University of Texas at Austin. Laura has been instrumental in creating an environment of learning and innovation at the library. She is to be credited for a very successful summer reading program with an average of over 5,000 participants each year for the past six years. In addition, under her leadership, the library set records in fiscal year 2019 with over 127,000 items circulated and a patron count of over 108,000 visits to the library. Laura has significantly increased programming at the library as well. These include Blind Day with a Book, The Stuffed Animal Sleepover, Lapset Storytime, the Monthly Lego Club, the Brown Back Book Club, and the Adult Craft Group, just to name a few. Laura leaves a tremendous legacy to Kerrville with her talented staff, and we wish her much success for a very bright future. Congratulations, Laura. So then, we also had somebody write in some comments about this particular agenda item, so I'll read those now. This is one from one of her former board members, David Lipscomb. So David says, having had the good fortune to serve as a member of the library advisory board both before and during the tenure of Ms. Laura Becktell, I wish to commend her outstanding performance and dedication. There is no doubt as to Ms. Becktell's abilities and enthusiasm in promoting the Buttholesworth Memorial Library to the community. She and library staff successfully created new and popular programs for young as well as adult patrons. Even during that difficult period of funding shortages, the library continued to provide its patrons with excellent service. While it will be a loss for this community and the library, I certainly wish Ms. Becktell all the best. Congratulations. Thank you. Wish I could give you a hug.
It's been an absolute honor to be a part of this team, and I will miss every single one.
Okay.
Mayor, let me just say something, too. She came, the city manager touched on it, and it's like, I wrote that, and I wrote Mr. Lipscomb's comments. I mean, she came here as an assistant, and next thing she knew, I think it was a year and a half, but she was like the director. And just watching her grow and became just a great manager, legacy, I mean, you look over there in the programs she's created and helped create, and then the staff she's, you know, around her, I'm really going to miss her.
Team player, can-do spirit. Yeah. It's all that's going to be missed.
Couldn't you work?
Yep. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
If no one on council pulls an item, then we will vote on the, these together.
I make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
All right.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hands. Okay? It passes unanimously. All right. Would you read, Ms. McLean, on that ordinance number 2020-14?
Ordinance number 2020-14, second reading, an ordinance rezoning the property located at 333 Guadalupe Street from a medium-density residential zoning district R2 to a multifamily residential zoning district R3, and amending the comprehensive plan Kerrville 2050 in accordance with such change. And, Mayor, we do have two presenters on the line, or citizens on the line.
Council, any comments or observations? Let me say that I have been concerned that this is positive for the neighborhood. For years, Guadalupe Street in that neighborhood has been neglected in a variety of ways. I've told some of you, when my son was in middle school, one of his friends, Leandra Lial, at the time she was about 12, wrote to the paper saying she couldn't even ride her bicycle on her street because it was so rough and neglected and all this. But now, this neighborhood is getting more attention. But in talking to Drew, in talking to Councilman Cochran, and some other folks, I'm convinced that we move ahead and that this can be a positive addition to the community.
Well, and I'd had asked about the sidewalks, but I believe my understanding is there are sidewalks on both sides, and so that would be, absolutely will be a requirement. It won't have to come back to us for another decision, right?
Already has sidewalks on Guadalupe, and then they probably have an internal system and have to comply with accessibility.
Okay. Okay. Other comments from council? All right. Ms. McLean, from the citizens?
Marion Gray. Mr. Gray, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Please state your name and address, and you now have five minutes.
Yes, it's Marion Gray. It's 2646 Saddlewood Boulevard. I don't have much to say, anything really to say, other than I think it will be a positive addition to the neighborhood that Mr. Blackman was talking about. I think at the end of the day, it will be a positive addition to the neighborhood. We were just requesting that it be zoned back to R3, the zoning that was in place when we initially began the project. And I just humbly ask that you rezone that, or re-rezone that back to R3 to allow us to continue with this project. We've had some interest in the project so far without, with just the initial unit. So I do think it would be a positive addition to the neighborhood. And that's all I have to say, other than any questions.
Chase Gray. Mr. Gray, please state your name and address, and you now have five minutes.
Chase Gray, 134 Heather Court, Kerrville, Texas. I really don't have any comments. I just called in if y'all had any questions or concerns so I could address them. So that's all I got for right now.
Mayor, that's all the speakers.
All right. If there are no questions or other comments, do I hear a motion on this matter?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2020-14 on second reading.
Second.
You get a second? Okay, all right. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. Now, okay, the foray item, Ms. McLean.
Joint Airport Board approved budget for FY 2020 to 2021, requested and presented by airport manager Mary Rohr. And, Mayor, we do have Mary Rohr and Mark Mosier on the line to present.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mosier, and then Ms. Rohr.
Yes, City Council. Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmen and women. I'm on the line here with our airport manager, Mary Rohr. And I am smiling because I have good news. I'd much rather be there in person, as most of you know me. I much prefer relationships eye to eye. Can we go to the PowerPoint and slide number two?
Okay. All right. This is two?
Yes.
Okay, okay, we're there.
Okay, great, thank you. I can't see it on my, on the laptop. This is kind of a brag board. This is the Texas economic impact that we get every year. This is actually 2018. We're due for 2019 anytime. And I want to draw attention to the number at the bottom right, 38.3 million. And most of you know how the economic, economic impacts are figured with salaries and other things sold, and the multiply as it goes through the community. So this is for the airport, and this comes from Department of Transportation Aviation Division. Now, you say, well, we've lost some jobs, like at Mooney, and we figured that at worst this could drop by as much as one-third, that's at the most, but we still have hopes that there'll be some changes with that. But can we go to the next slide, please?
Yeah, we're there.
Okay, great. The operating revenues. Of course, we have leases where we get most of our income from, we're operating expense in our budget. We'd much rather rent properties than we would land, you know, land leases, where we get vastly more of our income. And I'm going to mention briefly later about the need to maintain those properties, which is part of our grant assurances that the city and county has signed. It's their responsibility to maintain the properties that we have, including buildings, runways, and other properties. And then we get a small amount of fuel flow. We get $9.00 per gallon for every gallon of fuel that is brought onto the field. And we think at worst, that's going to be our biggest hit from COVID because it's been decreased air traffic as a result of COVID. But it's not going to be largely significant to us. We're not recession-proof, but that helps somewhat. But I really want you to focus on, on these gray boxes over at 15, 16, and 17. Now, I could have gone back and reached down to you, but going back to 2011, back in 2011, some of you noticed that around, we were getting $450,000 just to stay out of the red, stand the black. There was, we're burning through that much money. And somebody had the bright idea, it wasn't me, I like to take credit for that, but it was before me. I didn't get involved in 2012, so it's just before me that decided to run it as a business. The Airlift Agreement came involved, when Attorney General Abbott at the time, he was involved in this. And we started running it as a business, and the goal is to be revenue neutral. So we can see how that number's gone down. As of January 1, 2018, we stopped asking for capital to main, just to maintain our expenses. And, you know, that sounds great, and that is good. That was a great thing to do. I applaud it, I support it. One of the problems that happened in the last 12 years, not as much attention was given to upkeep. And we're getting some surprises now. We're getting some big ones, actually, on Brinkman Hangar. You know, we only have a total of 10 places for corporate hangars out there, six of them being in the Brinkman Hangar. And we're still figuring that out, but it's going to be large. Our crosswind runway, which is essential, you say, why do you need your runway? Well, oftentimes, the crosswind component makes a plane where it cannot land, and this could be an ambulance or one of our large jets that comes in quite frequently. So the crosswind runway is essential for a successful airport. Nevertheless, we're proud of the direction we're going. The next slide.
Yeah.
Our operating, our operating expenses are pretty level, are pretty level. So, you know, we focused really hard in the last three years with organic growth. Organic growth, it's what I call organic growth anyways, taking what you have and trying to make it more valuable. In other words, we're somewhat of a real, of realtors or landlords, so we're trying to use every bit of property we have. If there's a broom closet, we want to rent it. And we're almost there. Well, we're about 99.9%. We're trying to rent out that last broom closet or two. We discovered, hey, we have a maintenance building that's really too big for our, for our needs, so we're taking two-thirds of it, and we had a first offer today, or actually a second offer today to rent it out. So that's like, almost it. I said, we might have a broom closet left, but we've done really well. Every little office, every little hangar, rented. We have a backlog of people wanting to rent hangars, backlog of, we get requests all the time for box hangars. We're in the process of working on those areas. I must say, our board, I give credit to the board. We have, we've had great boards. I think the board we have now, it's not one of the strongest, it's the strongest. It's made up of different skills. It's a strategic board, which means each person brings something different to the table. And most importantly, they bring not only their skills, their efforts. They have, you know, we're not active management team, we're not, you know, an executive management team, but sometimes we think we are. We are trying to support Mary and Carol and everybody at the airport. We give a lot of time. As maybe you know, we worked really hard this past year. We spent about 13, 14 months working on our strategic plan. It hasn't been redone in a long time, so we don't know where we're going, we don't know where we're going to end up. So, and not only did we do the strategic plan, I always believe that goals are early entertainment without established ways to get there. So we revisited our strategic plan this past month to think, are we going where we wanted to go? Did we achieve what we want to achieve? What do we need to do differently? So we're going to keep it front and center in front of us and continue to move forward. You know, we, we are somewhat of a reliever airport to San Antonio, and it's going to get more and more that way. We get requests monthly from companies, have employees, they want something out there, but they want it now. It's kind of like moving to a town and trying to get a rental house, you know? So, somebody told me that, yeah, he doesn't like, you build them, they'll come. Well, at airports, that's the way it is. So we've lost out on some things, but we're still, we're still moving ahead. We've talked to a lot of companies. Just today, we're talking to an avionics company, and we, they have had some successes. There's one that's coming into town, you're all, all aware of a company, and that was because of an initiative on the airport property that started that to be here. So we're doing some good things, and we're going to continue to go down that road. We don't take those budget lightly. We work very hard, line on him, by line on him, with, with the entire team. We met independently with the councilmen, councilwomen, and Mark McDaniels and EA. They've been tremendous help, and we bring to you a balanced budget. And the only request we have is something we do every year, we have a grant match where we, this is for maintenance on our existing properties that don't bring income, such as our, we call it a ramp grant, well, it's just a ramp, it could be runway lights and things like that. But it's $100,000 total, where we get 50 from the state, and the city and county should kick in 25. So other than that, we're not asking for anything else this year. Like I mentioned at the beginning, we have a lot of expenses coming up, and we're going to be whirling down our operating budget. We're trying to keep that strong in case of emergency, but much of that, we could spend it three or four times over now, if we could jump through the hoops of building permits and getting people out there. That's, as you know, that's some of the difficulty of spending money to make them happen. But.
Yeah, Mark, thank you. Let's see, do you have any questions from the council? Ms. Segerman?
Yes, great report. I love the picture with the rainbow. Good timing. My question is, with your leases, do they look stable through this whole COVID, two and a half, three months? Seems like six months.
Well, that's a good question. Many of our leases are from private entities, private corporations. We haven't lost one person, not one. And like I said, we still have a waiting list, and we get lottery requests, and so I, I'll never say we're recession-proof, but I don't see that as a risk at this point. You know, people aren't going away, air travel's not going away. I've sent you all in the past the documents on what an airport really means to a city, why it is an economic gateway to a city. And Judy, if you could share that with everybody, I'd appreciate it. I reset it to Judy last night. It's a fantastic document. There's also a handbook that can assist you in educating your constituents on what an airport truly is, and why we wouldn't be the city we are if we didn't have it. So thanks for the question, but I really don't see that as a risk.
Good. Okay. Great report.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm just, as I look at your operating expenses overall, Mark, I think you guys have done a, a great job of keeping things consistent, and I, kudos to you for, for doing that. I know that's not easy.
Well, thank you. We try to stay lean and mean. You know, we used to have one and a half maintenance people, and now we have one who's just a ball of fire. And, you know, I, I have to give a lot of credit to Mary. You know, she is Energizer Bunny. She never stops. She's goal-oriented, and she keeps the AMICs, that's for sure. And Carol, who's backing up, I mean, we have a small team, but we're getting a lot out of them, I'll tell you that.
Okay. We have time on that, on that issue. I'll just make this comment. I was glad to see what you have in professional development. I think as things are changing so fast, and give the managerial and technical responsibilities the staff has, that is excellent that you are providing that, and maybe more along the way. Okay, do we have any speakers, citizens to this?
No, sir. No one signed up.
All right. Okay. Do I hear a motion on item foray?
I would like to make a motion that we, what are we doing here?
Approve the budget.
We're approving the budget for the airport for 2020 to 2021.
All right. Okay. Do we have a second?
Gary, second.
All right. You seconded. Okay, all right. All in favor of this approving the budget for the airport? If you'd raise your right hand. Okay? And it passes unanimously. If you would read in resolution number 152020.
Resolution number 15-2020, a resolution providing for the city's approval or disapproval of the Kerr Central Appraisal District's fiscal year 2021 budget. And Amy Dozer is introducing this item, and we have Chief Appraiser Sharon Constantinidis also on the line to present.
All right. Well, I think that covers most of it, so this resolution is related to the Kerr Central Appraisal District fiscal year 2021 budget, and Chief Appraiser Sharon Constantinidis will be presenting. And I believe, Sharon, you're on the phone with us?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening. How are y'all doing this evening?
Good, good.
The budget that I have for 2021 is basically the same bottom line as last year. Actually, it's a little bit less. We went ahead and we didn't give any salary increases or anything like that due to the situation. We expected, you know, some increases in like the mapping, so we did move some funds around. But overall, it's the same bottom line. Y'all have any questions or?
Well, Sharon, on the mapping, what, you went from 18 to 37, so, and it says something about no partners. Who were the partners that you lost, and can you explain that?
In the past, we had the Kerr County, and also Kerr County 91. Now, it does look like they're going to be joining us on the project again, so I'll be shifting that money back to the other areas where I need it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I printed out your, well, your, your scope of responsibility and everything else, your, the dates that you observe, and all the details. And it looks like very exciting reading, and I'm, I'm looking forward to going through it.
Okay.
I had a question, and I think it's been answered, but just to reiterate, I was looking at the part of the budget where the allocation comes from each of the, the entities receiving taxes, and it, the percent, the percent of levy is based on the rate that we're going to set this year. So what I'm looking at as the proposed could change based on our tax rate when it's set. Is that correct?
Yeah. What, what I've got on here, the estimate, is based on the 2019. I won't have the actual amount, the correct allocation, until everybody sets their tax rates.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Ms. McLean, do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. The, okay, any other? Okay, any other questions from the council? Would you say your last name for us?
Constantinidis.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I know you're in an enviable position in which everyone is excited to hear from you, but thank you.
Oh, yes.
Thank you for your good work.
Well, thank y'all for everything you do also.
Right, okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Make a motion, reapprove resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty.
All right, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second. All in favor, if you would let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, you're gonna stay up there, I think. All right, Ms. McLeannan, if you'd read this foresee in for us.
Bond refunding opportunity presented by Colby Echols Hilltop Securities.
Okay, and I'll just introduce this item. So in 2012, the city issued some certificates of obligation to fund the River Trail and also some water projects. In 2013, the city issued more debt for funding water projects. And now both of those issuances are eligible for what's called refunding, which is basically refinancing in the world of certificates of obligation. And these these two debt issuances were issued at low interest rates, coupon rates ranging from one and a half to two point seven five percent. But in today's interest rate environment, we think we can get an even better deal than that. So we've been working with our financial advisors at Hilltop Securities. And on the line with us tonight is Colby Echols and he's gonna go through a proposed refunding opportunity. Colby, are you there?
Yes, ma'am, I am here.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Colby Echols, the Hilltop Securities, appreciate the opportunity to to present before you this evening. Unfortunately, Anne, your the usual person had a conflict and she was unable to to be here, but I do appreciate the opportunity to be before you. As your municipal advisor, we are actively monitoring your debt. And we were able to locate this opportunity earlier this year. Anne and her team have been working with Amy since at least February, trying to structure, find the best opportunity, best savings opportunity for for this opportunity. As with everything else, when the COVID pandemic hit in March, it crippled our markets. There really weren't any deals going. If they were going, they were at very high interest rates, much higher than than they usually would be. But we are seeing the capital markets begin to normalize now, especially with credits that are highly rated, such as Sid. Investors are very interested in purchasing bonds again, especially high rated credits. And the the rates that we are seeing currently reflect that. If you look at slides two and three of the presentation, these both show the same index, but they're shown on different windows of time. Slide two shows twenty year history. Slide one just shows a single year history. We are at historical lows right now. And you'll see at the top, these are as of July sixteenth. I checked the rates, more current rates. It has continued to gone down, go down. It's gone down another two basis points since we we did this chart. So rates continue to improve and we hope that they will continue to improve. But with that said, the analysis that we'll talk about here in a minute does have a cushion. We have assumed an additional fifteen basis points, point one five percent added to the rates just to to make sure that if the market moves, that this thing will still work. Slide four of the presentation shows the yield curves. We would expect the city to issue bonds on basically the yield curve that's second to the bottom on this chart. That is a double A rating, which is the the city's rate, current rate. And with this issuance, we do not anticipate any rating downgrade from S and P. Moving to slide six, these are the bonds that we are currently looking at refinancing, refunding. As Amy mentioned, these were issued with extremely low interest rates. Two to two and a half percent on the twenty twelve's, one and a half to two seventy five percent on the twenty thirteen's. This is just a testament to how low rates are right now, that we're able to achieve debt service savings on these bonds by refinancing these bonds. Moving to slide eight, this is where we are looking at the refunding savings. This is for the twenty twelve bonds. The chart on the left hand side, you will see the prior debt service, the existing debt service of the twenty twelve bonds, the proposed refunding debt service that we would be issuing should council approve this, move forward with this, and then the projected savings. And you'll see on both of these, both slide eight and nine, we are putting the vast majority of the savings in fiscal years twenty three through twenty six. The twenty twelve's offer about average of ninety six thousand. The twenty thirteen's offer about an average of seventy five thousand in those four years. And we're doing this because these bonds are at least partially paid with monies from the water fund. And these are the years where the debt is highest, where where those transfers from the water fund are the highest. So we're trying to to lower that impact on the water fund. But we are seeing savings in all years. We are not planning on extending the the maturity of either of these bonds. And looking at the savings, the twenty twelve's gross savings, we're we're looking at about four hundred thousand. Net present value savings of three hundred and eighty four, which comes to about five point nine percent. And a true interest cost on these bonds of a one thirty seven. That is extremely low for, you know, looking at about a twelve year issuance here. Twenty thirteen bonds, gross savings, three hundred and thirty thousand approximately. PV of three oh five and percent of refunded par at about four point four percent. And then a true interest cost of about one point six percent. And keep in mind, as I mentioned earlier, we have added about fifteen basis points of cushion to this. So if rates stay the same, we would expect the savings to increase and these these yields to decrease. Moving to the summary, as I mentioned several times, we are at historical lows and we continue to go down. I make no prediction that we will continue to go down as we go forward, but regardless, this is an excellent time for the city to be issuing issuing debt. These bonds, at the time they were issued, were issued at extremely low rates. And it's just, again, a testament to how low rates have fallen. We were able to refinance these two series and still achieve a gross savings of approximately three hundred or seven hundred and thirty thousand. If the city should decide, if council should decide to move forward, the next step is going to be a parameters ordinance that's brought before you that you can you will vote on. Parameters will will set things like a minimum interest savings, a a maximum interest rate, a maximum par amount that these bonds will be issued at. Bond council will be able to discuss that further. But the current schedule that we we have anticipated has these bonds, the refunding bonds being issued around September twenty second of this year. And with that, I would entertain any questions that that you might have.
Questions? Looks very good. Okay, all in favor, or let's have a motion in regard to this.
Well, I'll make a motion that we direct our staff to proceed with pursuing this refunding opportunity.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, please let me know by the raised hand. All right, thank you. And we'll hear back in probably September.
Yeah, it'll be about a month from now, we'll be back with the parameters ordinance. And you may remember this from the last refunding, but just like Colby explained, it'll have some minimum parameters. And once we get council's approval on that, then we'll be able to move forward with actually issuing the the refunding bonds on the right day at the right time, kind of thing.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good work.
All right, Ms. McLeannan, four D.
Construction agreement with Allen Keller Company LLC for the twenty nineteen Bond Street Reconstruction Package A project in an amount of two million, eight hundred sixty two thousand, six hundred, eighteen dollar and twenty cent.
Good evening, mayor. Give you a quick history, because it's seems like it's been quite a while. It's only been a little over a year, but fiscal nineteen, we had budgeted for pavement management update. And we went through the did the assessment. We came back to you summer of last year with the street prioritization. We issued bonds for streets and drainage improvements for the reconstruction. This, you know, this is the first group, you know, the group one that we allocated, kind of the higher priority streets. Due to COVID coming, we've had to negate this a little bit. And, you know, the original included all of these streets, I believe there was thirteen total. Because of COVID, we've had to kind of prioritize a little bit more in in prioritizing using the conflicts, mainly Atmos, a couple of our utility lines. But these are the highest priority streets that we've got right now. We've got those designed in bid. These are gonna be conflict free because we don't know when this pandemic is going to end. We took these out to bid, got bids earlier this month and received two. And as Mr. Hoppy mentioned in the workshop, construction activities have escalated. We asked a lot of people and said, we just can't put on on our pallet for a couple of years. So our our hope is, once we get the utility revisions on on the second group, you know, when we bring those back to you, we've got a few more bids, but nonetheless, we got really good bids that were really competitive prices. And this, again, is the first issuance of of any contract for construction on the reconstruction streets. And again, here's the the second set. So these these are gonna kind of contingent upon scheduling with Atmos and relocating utilities. This will be in the next group. We plan to go out to bid like this summer. Hopefully, we can get that done when everything's just in limbo. That's, as you can see, most of those are kind of in this, you know, central city of this area, a couple a little bit on hillside. So what we've got before you tonight is the construction contract for those group one, package A, as we were denoting it. Again, as I mentioned, we got the package B streets, hoping to bring those to you here pretty soon. And then then we'll get back on on track with the group two, you know, early twenty one, getting those awarded, designed and awarded and get as much of this street reconstruction of the ten and a half million dollar bonds done as we can. So tonight, we've got this Allen Keller contract and we just recommend that you authorize city manager to execute and proceed forward. And because this question comes up, I had to put this calculation, forgot to put it in the agenda bill. This will be approximately four point seven land miles. I know that that's always a a figure people ask and I forgot to put that in there for you. The group two is about six and a half to seven land miles. So of the, I believe, twenty two reconstruction land miles that we had, that's we're trying to knock out as much as we can. Any questions?
Okay, council questions, comments?
I just couldn't get any of this to come out to ten thousand or ten million. Where was I supposed to?
No, no, that's we've got all of these, if you recall, from about this time last year. We had more need than we could really deliver with the bonds. And and so that's we we had to prioritize. Some of the group three that we had allocated were kind of low impact to city citizens. And and so those got pushed back. So, you know, group one and group two are the highest priority that we feel that we can allocate. This also, the ten and a half also accounts for the lowest and take it easy drainage. So I think we've estimated two to two and a half for that, so about eight, eight and a half for the reconstruction.
Okay.
Had to tell on myself, so I was reading the agenda and as I was reading, it said, you know, L L Allen Keller, for the two thousand nineteen Bond Street Reconstruction, I couldn't for the life of me figure out where Bond Street was. Took me a while to kind of get up the speed.
Thanks for sharing.
So here's a practical practical citizen question then. So we take this action tonight, then what? What what are we gonna see and when are we gonna see it? I know we ask you this a lot, but I think the citizens want to know when the trucks are rolling out. Are they doing this all at one time or is it one company doing one project at a time? Or how remind us about that if you would.
So we won't really know the the full extent of of how many crews are gonna come out until we have the pre-con meeting. Basically, next step is authorization for the city manager to execute the contract. Once the contract gets done, then we hold a pre-con meeting with contractor and that's where we really outline the schedule. And, you know, we try to tell them, okay, there's, you know, for example, Francisco Lemus right now, HEB under construction. We may, you know, caution a little little bit on that with Jefferson being closed. But if and similar with Guadalupe and Plaza, we likely won't shut down those two at the same time, but it'll be consecutive. So we were, you know, a month out from just dipping on bond companies. Sometimes they can get it to us in a week, sometimes it's a month. We'll start milling the asphalt. Guadalupe Water and Francisco Lemus are Francisco Lemus are our highest priority streets right now, most utilized. But we've got, you know, some maneuvering to to do to make sure that traffic is accommodated through those areas.
The fall?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we're completing, you know, trying to get everything completed by, I think we're looking at October, late October, early November. And then we'll have the second round hopefully overlapping that as well. Yeah, ideally, they put a crew on every street and we'd be done.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
One question, and that is, the so the work of Fugro in assessing the streets and so forth, that continues to pay dividends?
Yes, sir. If you recall, we revised it from just being worse streets. Now it's worse streets plus rideability. I mean, if it looks bad, okay, but it's still a smooth ride. We don't want to, you know, go waste money on that when we've got this other one over here that's like a washboard. Francisco Lemus is is probably the one we utilize the most as reference to that. It's a street that has been pushed back, but it's one of the most utilized streets in town. And the old plan had it pushed to several years from now, so we still wouldn't even be touching it. Whereas the new plan, we took into rideability and and classification toward the, you know, more utilization of the street, the the higher scoring it got. And and so that's we're we're trying to focus on on the the bigger picture items and and get the most bang for the buck with that.
Okay. Do we have any?
Kyle, excuse me, just one question. You'll still be doing potholes in in other parts of the city?
Yes, we we still have the crack seal, the slurry seal contracts and then in-house, we're still doing the milling overlay. This is just specific to the reconstruction that we could not accommodate in-house. So that's the other three, this is that fourth leg. The the other three, we can handle with our budget and in time allocation. This is that fourth leg that, you know, helps our streets department.
I have one quick question.
I'm sorry, yes.
One quick question, Newton Street, it looks like it's not in our city limits.
It is. It's it's barely in. The city limits are, I think, about two blocks away.
Must be pretty bad. I I have to say, I don't recall driving it, so.
It's a small street and so, but again, this is one that didn't have any impacts. That's the reason it got, you know, pushed ahead of like the the Barnet's and McFarland.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any citizens?
No, sir, not for four D.
Okay, all right. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
I move that we authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a construction contract.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all right. Either one, either Cochran or Segerman. Okay, all in favor of this item, please let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, all right. Now, Ms. McElhanan, if you would read in 4E?
Purchase of a 2024 F-550 four-by-four with off-road kit and remount while in brush skid and components not to exceed $78,863.
Okay, this is one we had last time, is back with us. And we've got a local organization who is a local company that's doing this one. Chief Smith?
Okay, so since, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Since 2011, the fire department has responded to wild and brush fires, off-road fires with a 2011 Ford F-550 truck. Back in March, the DEF system failed on that vehicle and damaged the engine. We've been given a quote to repair both DEF system and replace the engine in excess of $26,000. The fire department believes the more feasible approach is to purchase a new cabin chassis, remount the current brush skid, and we've contracted, talked with Ken Stople. They've given us a price of $78,863 for a new cabin chassis to remount the brush skid outfitted with the off-road kit to get us in position to respond to brush type fires. Installation of the, they've contracted with Sidon Martin, Sidon's Martin, to install the off-road kit and do the remount. Sidon's Martin is the original equipment manufacturer of the vehicle. By utilizing them, and we will get the warranty from the original equipment manufacturer along with the warranty on the new vehicle. So staff recommends that you authorize the city manager to purchase a 2024 F-550 four-by-four with an off-road kit and remount the wild and brush skid on the current vehicle we have now. At a cost not to exceed $78,863.
All right. Council questions that you have of chief?
I had a couple of questions, chief, and my, I'm not a big bandator, but my original thought was, hey, you know, if we can repair this for '26, maybe get another five years out of it, why, why are we going with the full price? How many times a year has it been used? How many hours are on it? Miles, I'm not sure what the right calculation is, but.
I don't have the hours or mileage with me, I didn't bring that with me. But to just give you the reasons behind my recommendation to replace it, the National Fire Protection Association typically recommends that fire apparatus be kept in frontline service for 10 years and then moved to reserve status for the additional five. We, up until January, we did have a reserve brush truck. It was a 24-year-old vehicle. We put it out of service because the pump and tank failed on it. It was going to be about a $5,000 repair, and the vehicle had some other mechanical issues. We didn't want to invest that type of money in a reserve vehicle that was 24 years old. So now this is the only vehicle we have. We're concerned with spending $26,000 to replace a new engine, which will still leave us with a 10-year-old transmission, 10-year-old chassis, 10-year-old vehicle that we could be faced with significant repairs in the future, so.
How, how, do you have a log of how many times it's been put to use?
I'll, I'll be more than happy to get that information to you. I don't have it with me tonight, but it's, you know, we don't respond to brush fires as often as we do structure fires and AMS calls, but there's a strong possibility, you know, that we do go in and around Kerrville to brush fires, and this is the vehicle we have.
Chief, I'm sorry, can you speak up just a little bit?
I said, it's not uncommon to have brush fires in and around Kerrville.
Sure.
And this is the only vehicle we have to fulfill, you know, that obligation to combat those type fires.
And so what will happen to this vehicle, then? You get a new one?
When, so what will happen with this vehicle? When we take the brush skid and the turd off the front bumper and the plumbing and everything, you'll basically end up with a cabin chassis that we would like to trade in on this vehicle is included in the trade value of $1,500.
Oh, okay, okay.
You basically have that.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm glad to see you're using somebody local, I appreciate that very much.
Okay, any other questions of chief? Okay, do I hear a motion in regard to this matter?
Make a motion, we approve the purchase of a 2024 F-550 with all the accessories, an amount of $78,863.
A second.
And we've got a second here. Okay, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Okay, chief, I just want to say, you've spent a lot of time here with us this afternoon and this evening, when you could be out fighting fires. I appreciate your presence, but one other thing, would you demonstrate your mask?
Oh, nice.
That's great.
Purple Fire Department, mask.
That's great.
Wow.
And just for the record, when I'm not in it, I do practice social distancing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
And thank you all for your approval. This is a critical piece of equipment.
Absolutely.
All right.
Can you take us for a ride?
We will.
Yeah, I just don't want to see it in my yard, or anywhere around my yard.
You know, my philosophy is that we never have to use any of it, but, you know, if we do, we'll be prepared.
There you go.
Yeah.
You want to make sure the transmission works when you get in it.
I think so.
Okay, Ms. McElhanan, read in 4F?
Briefing and possible action as to the city's ongoing preparedness in response to COVID-19 coronavirus. And mayor, we do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Okay.
So mayor, the chief's got his usual update about testing and cases. But I think also council members Iger and Seigerman possibly have an update also on the food relief effort that is ongoing.
All right, okay.
There it is. Okay, so I'll start with my usual, just to look back at the previous week, week, the total tests that were done by CPO, 524 tests, 36 confirmed positive, and for the week closing on Sunday, June 26, we had a 6.9 positivity rate. We, for several weeks, as I've reported here, we've been trending up, but you can see that now, looks like we're decreasing in the number of total positive cases and our positivity rate. 36 positive cases for the weekend in July 26, and then a positivity rate of 6.9%. You can see in the previous weeks, we did, well, two of the previous weeks, we did a considerably larger amount of tests, which I'm sure impacted the positivity rate. But the week we did the 1,071 tests, we only had a positivity rate of 8.7, 8.1. Close of business today, I updated these numbers before I came over to the, to the council meeting tonight. So as of today, we have a total of 366 confirmed cases in Kerr County, 55 active, 307 recovered. And the four deaths might surprise you, but this information was updated on DSHS's website on yesterday. DSHS has now changed their reporting in terms of identifying deaths. Once the medical examiner signs the death certificate, they are uploading it. If it's COVID, they're going to put it in the system, so they're saying we'll have these numbers quicker. I can't give you any information on what specific COVID case that was to take us from one death for a long time. We only had, we were only showing one death, although we know we had two in Kerr County. Now we're showing four, and we, we've reached out to DSHS, but we haven't been given any additional information on the specifics of the four deaths we now have. July 14, I think we were just wrapping up that testing when I reported to you all at your previous council meeting. I think I gave you a number, I'm not sure if it was 724 at that time, but the total amount of tests done in that testing cycle was 724, 546 of which were Kerr County. We had 28 positives out of that cycle specifically for Kerr County. And it's been confirmed that the next test date is going to be August 5, and it's going to be held at the youth event center. On Friday, myself and the county's emergency management coordinator met with Dr. Ringsdorff, who's the medical director for Region 8, to address the inconsistencies we've received in the reporting process and the lag of us getting information. They assured us that they've reassessed their process and improved it, and moving forward, typically, both the emergency management coordinator for the city and for the county gets a report from DSHS. They've assured us that we'll get that report at 4 o'clock daily. That port is not, report is not available to the general public because it does have sensitive information that they've asked us not to reveal. But there is a DSHS dashboard that's available, and the general public will be able to go to that dashboard, see the total amount of cases, the recovery cases and deaths. They've assured us that those two pieces of information will be updated daily and simultaneously. So they've asked that we use this reporting information to determine our status going forward regarding the attestation, you know, meaning if we stay at 75% occupancy rates or have to reduce to 50. This doesn't necessarily, well, I guess it does involve COVID-19, but thought it would be a good piece of information to share with you tonight. We reconvene the Recovery Community Coalition meetings after several months of not meeting. And just some of the things they were able to talk about and kind of focus on and work through is, the main thing is, they're having the same challenges that everybody else is with COVID-19, specifically in their recovery homes, you know. It's been difficult, you know, if somebody is identified as positive, you know, isolating the rest of the group, getting the information in terms of when they're considered recovered and can go back to work. They've had some difficulty, you know, keeping members focused on maintaining their superiority throughout this pandemic. And it's been a real difficulty from the meeting on yesterday from what we're hearing from them, what I heard from them in the meeting, you know, actually keeping the online meetings going and the participation and commitment from those that are trying to recover from some type of addiction. So with that, I close with your typical reminders, and, you know, you know what they are. It's COVID-19, and it's still impacting our community. And, you know, it's important that we practice social distancing. You know, those that are at risk, you know, take extra precautions, and, you know, it's mandatory that when you're in commercial public spaces and you can't maintain your six feet social distance, and to wear a mask. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have on it.
Okay, council, do you have any questions?
Thanks for all you do, chief, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, one question, do you get very many repeats for testing?
Do we get any repeats?
I mean, many, I'm sure you get some, but does it happen a lot? And do, do most of the people who are the majority of the people who actually have been tested positive come back then for a negative or do another test?
Okay, so let me answer that question in two parts. I don't, we don't track information, and I haven't heard of the military department or Peterson tracking retest. I'm sure they have some way that they can, but I've never gotten any information on repeats. Now, there have been individuals that have retested. That's not a recommendation. Typically, the recommendation is if you have signs and symptoms, you're tested. If you're tested, then you go through the 14-day isolation period, and you're good to go. Now, they have had people that they've retested, but that have tested positive, but no specific information on, you know, those that actually repeat the testing cycle.
Any other questions for chief? If not, then this is not one we take action on, but thank you.
Thank you for all you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I'm sorry, did we have, we don't have any citizen input on that one?
Yes, sir, we do have two citizen speakers signed up.
Yeah, please.
The first citizen speaker will be Roman Garcia. Mr. Garcia, please state your name and address, and you now have four minutes.
Thank you, Ms. McElhanan. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Roman Garcia. My address is 934 Con Street, Kerrville, Texas, 78028. I'm speaking regarding when the city council is planning on reopening its meetings for the public to attend in person as it relates to COVID-19. Now, I know on March 24, you began prohibiting the public from attending your meetings in person, and since then, the city has provided alternate options for the public to give testimony and/or ask questions of the council during its meetings in an effort to prevent the spread of the COVID-19 virus. But last month, at a city council meeting, Mayor Blackburn and Mr. McDaniel stated that you were planning on returning to your regular meeting format at the beginning of July. However, unfortunately, it's evident by tonight's meeting that that's no longer the case. And I think we can agree that people speaking in person is more impactful than the other alternate methods that are offered. In addition, there have been, what I consider, major technical issues and a lack of proper procedures in place that have prevented me from speaking at two previous meetings. Now, after my second attempt, I was contacted by a city staff member who went over the reasons why I was unable to speak, and it turns out the city didn't have the proper procedures in place to ensure that should a certain technical issue occur, the public would still be able to speak. So it's evident that these issues occurred because of such lack of procedures. Now, although I appreciate the information from the staff member, it's unfortunate that this occurred in the first place. That the city is going to use alternate methods for people to speak, there should be a protocol for unexpected issues. And I've spoken with other individuals who've had similar issues. And so not only does speaking over the phone or through other methods not provide the same impact and effectiveness as speaking in person, but as Mayor Blackburn has been noting at the beginning of every meeting, the council has also removed the visitors and citizens forum item from its agendas to quote-unquote "limit nonessential items." However, that item provides a unique opportunity for citizens to publicly bring up topics that are not on the agenda for both the knowledge of the council and the public. So how is receiving input from the public on other topics nonessential? And why would you want to prohibit that, and what negative impacts does it have? Because I believe that government entities strive when the public is encouraged and given the ability to be involved. Now, further, I'd like to note that the Kerr County Commissioners Court has continued to allow the citizens and the public to attend its meetings to speak in person. In doing this, they've made accommodations by providing an upstairs room in the courthouse with a live feed of the meeting, and the public has had a place to wait until their name is called, all while giving them the ability to social distance. Now, the city is equipped with at least two rooms upstairs, the upstairs balcony, and downstairs lobby as areas for the public to safely wait before entering the council chambers to speak in person. Not only that, but thinking outside the box, I believe the city even owns a projector screen. I know we use one for the Movies in the Park events. That could be set up in front of City Hall, along with chairs properly spaced out, as another place for people to safely wait to speak. As you can see, there are a number of ways to accommodate the citizens who wish to speak to you in person.
30 seconds.
So I have three questions. Why aren't the city council meetings open to the public to attend or speak in person yet? When is the council planning on doing so? Why isn't the visitors and citizens forum agenda, besides the claim to limit nonessential items? Because I believe it is. And I'll stay on the line, and I would appreciate the response to these questions, and I look forward to this, and if you do choose to take action on the next item, I hope to see some. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Yes, Mr. Garcia, it has been. Mr. Garcia, it has been a continuing matter of deciding what is safe to do in regard to the meetings of the council. You may be aware of that there are some city councils that have met and, in fact, contributed to the spread of the virus because precautions were not taken. We have taken numerous precautions while at the same time seeking to provide input by citizens. Now, in terms of when we will change, you mentioned my statement to the beginning of July. As it turned out, we had this surge of cases, and we're not able to open up as we had hoped. When we will now is still uncertain, but I guarantee you, the council and the staff would like to get to that place where we have council meetings as we have in the past. Just in terms of the room and the structure, comparing the county courthouse to the city hall, it's been more difficult for us to open up in ways that the Commissioners Court has. But we continue to seek opportunities for citizens to speak and for, hopefully, moving to a time that we can open up once again. All right.
The next speaker is George Barudy.
Okay.
Mr. Barudy, state your name and address, and you now have four minutes.
George Barudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So in response to the current COVID situation and to aid in covering electricity costs for those customers having difficulty paying their household electric bills, the K-Pub Board has approved an implementation of a change-for-charity program. Without any prior customer consent, this program will round up all customer monthly invoice amounts to the next higher dollar amount, with the excess money being sent to a local charitable organization for administration of utility bill grant program. Supposedly, customers have the ability to opt out of this program. However, the default is that all customers will be assessed this new fee unless they become aware of the opt-out provision and take the necessary steps to remove their account from the program. As a city council representative on the K-Pub Board, my questions are really directed at you, Mr. Mayor. First, I've been told you missed the K-Pub meeting where this program was voted on. However, could you please tell us how you would have voted and if you are comfortable with a public utility essentially taking money from customers without their consent and not for the provision of utility services? Second, numerous surrounding area co-ops are instituting similar programs with one very important variation. All surrounding electricity providers that I was able to locate are instituting an opt-in rather than an opt-out program. Could you please explain why K-Pub chose their method? Due to the nature of any opt-out program, rather than a charitable giving program, this will in fact function as a new fee being applied to all customers by default, and as such would require approvals from both the Public Utilities Commission and this city council. So, Mr. Mayor, could you please tell the citizens what, if anything, did the Public Utilities Commission have to say about this new fee? Furthermore, can you tell us when it will be coming to council for approval? Hopefully, this was simply an error in oversight, but might I suggest that you propose to K-Pub to immediately switch the program to an opt-in program, thus allowing the rate payers the right to choose whether or not to be charitable?
The program, obviously, as it's implemented, may be revised in a variety of different ways, just to make sure that it accomplishes the purpose. The intent of that program, and I did miss the meeting, it's one of the few I have missed, but the purpose of that program is to try to help people of low income to pay their utility bills and to use a local entity to make that happen. Now, the question of, is it a, you know, should it have been an opt-out or an opt-in program? I'm not certain, but you know what? I think, I'll have to double-check on this, but we had very few complaints about how it was set up. The other thing I would say is that, Mr. Barudy, that I don't see that coming before the city council. It is a decision by the board of K-Pub, and so I don't think it will be presented to the city council for approval.
That's all the citizen speakers, sir.
All right.
So Judy, do you have an update?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've got, we'd like to present a little bit of good, good news.
Yeah, yeah, good.
When we'd established the Curville Food Relief and set up the hotline, and incidentally, the hotline is still, it's going to Councilmember Seigerman's phone. And, but when we started out, Delane and I had a goal of about fifty thousand, and that goal has more than doubled. We have raised a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And this has all been done through the community foundation. They've just been wonderful. They've not charged us anything to do this, and they've just been great to work with. We have distributed over seventy thousand dollars, and most of, the majority of this money has gone to Mustard Seed, which we heard about Beth earlier this evening, St. Vincent DePaul's, CAM, and the Doyle Center. In raising this money, it has, it's come from many places. About a hundred and seventy-eight individuals and businesses have contributed, and three local organizations have just gone above and beyond what they needed to do. The K-Pub employees raised five thousand dollars. The Calhoun Foundation donated ten thousand dollars, and the HEB Butt Foundation donated twenty-five thousand, and the HEB Butt Foundation employees raised an additional sixteen thousand.
Wow.
So we have just, the community has just jumped in, and they've just been absolutely wonderful to do all of this. And I was going to add that with, because this is going to Mustard Seed Ministries and the others that I mentioned, on Monday, that money, money that helped pay for that mega food drive, and we heard the numbers that overall Beth has, the Mustard Seed has served, on Monday alone, they had two hundred and eighty-four families, over a thousand individuals. So the need is still out there, and it's not going to go away for a while. So we just encourage people to please, please keep donating. One of the things, too, that Mustard Seed Ministry is doing that is just, they've gone above and beyond, they deliver to people who don't have transportation. So it's, it's, it's just, it's, it's just, it's still been so exciting, and it's just been, we just appreciate all of these entities that have given and all of the individuals and businesses. So, thank you. Anything to add, Delane?
No, except that I thought, we thought, the calls would dwindle, and I think with paying rent being a challenge now for a lot of folks, some of the rents have actually gone up, so that puts a decision of food or rent. So we're still getting calls, and I think that's going to continue for a while until people get back on their feet and they're current with their obligations. But, you know, just about the time I think we should turn the hotline off, we'll get maybe five a week, and it doesn't sound like a lot, but these are five really, really, you know, in need families. So we're just happy, the donations have been wonderful.
Yes. So just thank you to everyone that's been involved with that, so.
See, and I want to say thank you to Councilman Seigerman and Eichner for heading this up, taking the initiative, and keeping it going. And I never look bragged beyond that. I feel like it's one more indication of the love of this council for this community. And you guys have done a great job. All right. Ms. McLeannan, four G, please.
Declaration of Local State of Disaster Due to a Public Health Emergency, March twentieth twenty twenty. And Mayor, we do have two citizen speakers signed up for this item.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hayes, do you have any response for us?
Well, I do. I can just present this item. So you'll recall, particularly maybe the mayor, has issued three previous declarations, all three occurring in March, when we were trying to, you know, kind of had, all had our heads on a swivel and were working through the beginning stages of this. We haven't done anything with it, nor did we really need to, although it certainly has, the last one, which has superseded the previous two, has some language in there that's outdated. So I've worked with the mayor over the past few days to update it and to condense it where necessary, put some more historical perspective into it, update it with respect to the governor's actions, and so subsequently, it removes some of the regulations that the governor addresses, such as gatherings and limitations on those, care facilities. You'll recall that the governor has taken steps to put that in his order, which is the rule of law. So, all that being said, I've drafted a new declaration. The mayor, I think, has signed that. You all have that at your places, and then pursuant to state law, you then need to consent to it and essentially ratify it and approve that it'll go off or continue for a period beyond seven days. Otherwise, it'll expire next week, essentially. So that's what I think we're asking you all to do tonight, is to approve its Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty, and again, that'll ratify the mayor's current declaration.
Let me ask you this. I think I know the answer basically. When would we not do this declaration? In other words, what are the conditions where we say, okay, we don't need to do this?
Well, certainly when the pandemic is over, and I'm not sure that anyone is going to, you know, you know, actually determine that specific date. But having a declaration, disaster declaration in place, does two things that I think are very important. One, it stands up our emergency management operation, which you certainly need to do, and that it also is a status that will allow us at times to seek aid from, whether that's the state or the federal government. And when you do that, they'll ask, have you issued a declaration or a disaster declaration? And so it's very important to have one of these in place during the penancy of a disaster.
So my understanding, if I, when we did the original declaration, it was basically, it's open-ended, there is no expiration date on it. We had the option, and there was discussion, did we want to put a fourteen-day, thirty-day time period on it and then readdress it? And I think it was my comment that can't we, at any meeting, terminate that agreement by consensus or by vote? And so it seemed somewhat appropriate, I think, at that time, just to let it run. I was one of the ones that was asking to have this put on the agenda, and I just think, one, we got it cleaned up a little bit, and, two, I want the citizens to know that we're aware of it. We're looking at it. It's not that it's just going to run forever and ever. Nobody would be happier, I think, than the people sitting at this table, that if this would go away and we could go back to normality again. But I just think it's, I wanted, I wanted to see it again. I wanted the citizens to know that we are thinking about it. So that's kind of the reason that we got it here. So I appreciate your work and the mayor's work in putting it together and cleaning it up.
Well, Gary, I thank you for, I thank you for doing that because it is good to look at it, and it helps remind us of the things that we need to be aware of concerning it, so.
I do know some restaurants and businesses that actually have this, like, two or three-page that pertains to them, like, right on their front desk, or, because the Calhoun has that so that they can reference. You know, when people come in and want to buy a ticket and want to know the do's and don'ts and all, they have it sitting right there. So they are paying attention to it, so I'm glad you brought it up because it did. And whoever drafted all of these edits, my hat's off to them. I mean, your three-page memo to us, that was really helpful, the way you had all the graphs and the, I could find everything so easily, so, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from council? Okay, we have some citizen input?
Yes, sir. The first is Roman Garcia. Mr. Garcia, please state your name and address, and you now have four minutes.
Thank you again, Ms. McLeannan. Roman Garcia, nine thirty-four Pecan Street. I'm going to follow up on my remarks on the previous item and provide additional remarks as they both relate to aspects of this item. First, I appreciate the council reviewing this declaration. I'm glad that the last meeting Councilmember Cochrane proposed that the council should review it on a monthly basis, but I will note that that was suggested by citizens months ago, and this review should have been happening on a regular basis from the beginning, just like y'all stated. Y'all had the opportunity to put that in, that y'all would review it, but you didn't. But finally, one hundred and twenty-six days since it was adopted, here we are. So first, I stated earlier that the public was not allowed to speak in person, and in response, Mayor Blackburn's argument that there was a spike in COVID-19 cases and that's why the city continues to prohibit in-person testimony, well, the city and Kerr County areas opened up free walk-in testing for people without symptoms. Whereas before, people would need to have symptoms and schedule an appointment to be tested. So yes, there was a spike, but that's why. Now, moving on to address concerns specifically with the declaration, I have noticed actions have been taken inconsistent with it. Now, I'm aware that on March sixteenth, Governor Abbott suspended sections of the Open Meetings Act that would normally require government entities to allow the public to attend and speak at meetings in person. However, I'm sure you probably all have the declaration in front of you, so if you could turn to page three of the declaration that you adopted and look at section nine, it states that the council will hold its meetings in a way to separate people from personal contact with each other. But it continues by stating, quote, "Meetings of the city council and boards and commissions shall be provided in a manner that best serves these purposes, but balancing the right of a person to make a public statement orally or," I mean, orally, "and in person or in writing, but keeping in mind the public health and safety." So the declaration clearly states that the public will have a right to give public testimony in person. But as we all know, the council has been operating its meetings inconsistent with that provision. A second, section eleven suspends all meetings of the city's boards, commissions, and committees except for the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, there are four or five boards that have been having meetings since the declaration was adopted. I believe this is exactly why the review of this declaration was needed in the first place, to make sure that we are constantly being consistent with what this council has adopted. Now, as I stated before, I look forward and I hope that this city council takes actions to make sure that either those are corrected or that we can start attending meetings in person. This is very crucial, I believe, for the transparency and for the effectiveness of our government to continue. So thank you once again, and I hope that I'll be able to speak to you in person again soon.
Great. We have another speaker?
Yes, sir. George Barudy. Mr. Barudy, please state your name and address, and you now have four minutes.
George Barudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So I was going to actually raise a couple of things that Mr. Garcia just raised, but I'm going to ask instead, the declaration that you guys are, I guess, going to propose to sign right now, did it remove section eleven that talked about the city boards and commission meetings being suspended? Are they now free to go?
Mr. Hayes? Yes.
Yes, it did remove section eleven.
Okay. And did it by chance remove section twelve at all or modify it at all, part about the city manager's extra powers?
It modified it. And, Mr. Barudy, not to take up any of your time, but this will be posted on the website as soon as possible.
Okay. Well, those were the two main concerns that I'd had ongoing. If you recall, about a month ago, I asked about if we were still under this declaration. It was those meetings that I was wondering about. So it, you know, again, everybody's been saying it, but kudos to Mr. Cochrane for even asking to review this. I would argue that putting a termination date into the document actually is better than leaving it open-ended for the simple reason that had you had the termination date in there, we wouldn't have gone three months before reviewing it because you would have been forced to review it because it would have expired. That alone seems like the- That alone seems like the, the most obvious reason. The governor's orders are all coming out with like a 30-day time period. It just seems prudent to put the date in, as Mr. Cochrane said, to basically remind everybody that we are actually aware of what's in it, because clearly we haven't been to date. And so, I guess I would just suggest or request that you consider adding a term date. I would say, you know, a month is probably long enough. Sounds like the, the other modifications seem like they're in there. I don't suppose you added anything about, well, it's okay, it'll be posted, I'll look at it when it comes out. That's all, thanks.
Okay, council, what, what do you want to do with this matter?
I think we did it. We did what we.
We have to ratify it if we want to, if we want it to continue.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to do that.
I would, too.
Like to what?
You need a motion, ma'am?
Yeah.
It's, I'm sorry, the action before you, proposed before you is adoption of Resolution 16-2020, which will ratify the disaster declaration as signed by the mayor.
Okay, because I just had reviewed the declaration.
Is it 1620, or is it 062020?
That's the old one.
Oh, that's the old one, oh, okay.
All right. Okay, do we have a motion?
I thought.
So, I'm going to move that we, no, clarify again, this is a new.
This is a new Resolution 16.
It's a new resolution, okay. And the declaration is Declaration of Local State Disaster Due to Public Health Emergency, March 2020, is the title. I'm sorry, I'm not seeing that, I'm not.
Well, it is, if the resolutions should be at your places, and so by adoption of that resolution, it'll ratify and consent to the mayor's declaration that he signed earlier today.
So, Sig, so on the last page, the city, the Resolution Number 16-2020?
Yes.
To make a motion that we adopt Resolution 162020 as.
All right, we've got a motion, is there a second?
Gary, sorry.
Gary, second, okay.
Yes, I did.
All right. All in favor, let me know by the raised hand. Okay, there you go. You know, under that declaration, I do have some expanded powers, but I, I, I look forward to relinquishing those, I'll tell you. Okay, financial update, Ms. Dozier.
All right, coming to the end of the agenda, so this is going to be brief, and I've talked to you a lot about finances, it seems like, this month, but I'm going to hit a few highlights here. This is the financial update for the month ended June 30th. First, I wanted to start with our updated revenue projection. So, as you know, we are definitely feeling COVID impacts to our revenue. On the positive side, our sales tax has been better than expected, and we've talked a lot about that, but we are still seeing revenues lower than what our original budget was on the EMS, municipal court, recreation revenue side. So, we are still looking at about a $1.5 million shortfall when compared to our original budget on the revenue side. Looking at the general fund, through the month of June, we had total revenue of $22.8 million and total expenses of $18.9 million. Talked about a few of those. Like I said, on the revenue side, sales tax is better than expected, property taxes coming in right on budget, so we're in good shape there, and the issue comes in this all-other category. So, specifically EMS revenue, year-to-date, $280,000 less than budget. Looking at just the month of June base charges, that's the main charge for ambulance service, down 31% compared to June of the previous year's. Billable incidents, down 14%, that's a year-to-date number, not just a June number, but the way our EMS biller breaks it out for us, we see non-emergency transports, emergency transports, non-transport calls, especially on the non-emergency side, we're really seeing significant declines in volume there. Recreation revenue, you know, that's been hit hard, and KSP, Curville-Shiner Park was actually closed for a time. They did have a very strong June, though, and I'm happy to report that. Strong occupancy, lots of future reservations, all booked in the month of June. The pool is open, swim lesson 77% full, so that's a decent turnout, given the circumstances. Municipal court, the revenues continue significantly less than budget there. Court proceedings have resumed, but you can see for the month of June, 28% lower than June of 2019. Moving on to the expenditure side, expenditures are trending lower than budget. You know, we've put a lot of cost-cutting measures into place, and they, they definitely are paying off. We have vacancies that haven't been filled, we've adjusted our paving schedule, no travel, reduced training, reduced supplies and equipments, all the things that we've talked about. Moving on to the water fund side of things, we are looking at, through the month of June, year-to-date, revenue 9.2 million and expense 9.2 million. Looking at the revenue in particular, we are still a little bit down compared to budget on the water revenue, especially on the commercial side, we're seeing lower than budgeted commercial consumption, so we think that could be somewhat COVID-related. And then we're also seeing irrigation lower than budget, that may be turning around this month. This is for the month of June, so, and that includes May consumption build in June, so we're hoping that that will turn around some. This is also our first year of a new revenue model, so we're tweaking that model some as well. And then on the sewer revenue side and the other revenue side, we're much closer to budget or better than budget. Water fund expenditures, same kind of cost-cutting measures have been put in place across the board, not just in the general fund, so we are seeing some savings because of vacancies and reduced maintenance and supplies expense, and thankfully, we haven't had any large contingency spending for, you know, a pump going out or something large breaking like that. Then, few highlights on other funds. Development Services Fund is doing really well, revenues of $903,000 compared to expenditures of $648,000. So, they've already met their revenue budget for the entire year. Yeah, so that's pretty impressive. They have large projects that have happened this year, HEB, KISD, The Landing, Arcadia, Starbucks, you know, whole list of things, so really good there. Golf Fund, revenues of $600,000 compared to expenditures of $656,000 year-to-date. The good news there is that, I'll switch over here, they did host two tournaments in June, and the month of June saw green fees that were up compared to June of the previous year. So, that's the first time we've seen that in a while, so that's some good news. The Hotel Occupancy Fund, you'll remember that there's a one-month lag here, so the June revenue represents May stays, so still down considerably there, down 47% compared to June of the prior year. We're still looking at a net loss for the year of probably $150,000 in that fund, but the month of July has been much better. So, we'll see, though, you know, we have seen some spikes in cases and that kind of thing, so we'll see what kind of impact that ends up having, but, but trending better.
There's another tournament this month, the Heart of the Hills.
Yes.
That July will show.
Yeah, that's the largest tournament of the year.
I'm just glad they were able to still do it, so.
And that's this next.
It's this week.
It's this week, okay, this week, this week, okay. All right, and then a quick real estate update. A lot of you are probably living this, but anyway, the month of June, very busy in the real estate industry, number of residential properties sold and dollar value of residential properties sold both up significantly compared to June of the prior year, so increase in some prices and certainly increases in volume. Any questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Ms. McLaughlinen, do we have any citizens to speak?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. I don't think there's a need for an executive session, is there?
No, sir, I don't think so.
Okay, we are adjourned at 7:42.